Okay, we'll do that again. Good evening everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Planning Board for the second of October 2019. I'd like to introduce the members of the Planning Board. My name is Pete Pecos.
Larry Murphy.
Leslie Matthews.
Martha Taylor, Town Planner.
And we will be addressing a couple items tonight on our agenda, but first will be our September financial report, which I will read into the record. Number one, paywall warrants for Town Planner and Planning Administrator PR 20-6 for pay period ending 9/14/2019 and PR 20-7 for pay period ending 9/28/19. The second is the Planning Board expense for Mass Association of Planning Directors annual dues on 9/4/2019. And the third is payments for engineering review escrow account of Josuata Newberry Golf Center inspections for 9/5/2019. Okay, so we have to just document those each meeting. So tonight, we have the opportunity to continue an informal discussion regarding an open space residential development, OSRD, of 105 High Road, Mark DePiero, DePiero LLC. Before we begin our discussion, I'll just let folks know that we won't be making any decisions tonight or discussing from the board's perspective, because the materials were just disseminated to the board today and they haven't had a chance or an opportunity to digest them, just so that you're aware of that. And I think, Mark, you had a conversation with Martha about that today. Okay, cool, great. Thanks.
For the record, my name is Bob Grassel from Engineering Land Services.
Just that microphone. Yeah.
It speaks. I'd like to submit from the last hearing, we've talked to the fire department.
We have copies of this. Yep.
Well, at the last hearing, the feedback from the Planning Board members were that you had some issues of fires and safety in length of driveways. We presented a full-size conventional yield plan for a conventional subdivision plan, which I'll just briefly go over, that the road meets the requirements of the length and the roadway width and the pavement width going into the cul-de-sac and the pavement width around the cul-de-sac. We're presenting, proposing five, six lots. One lot would be a single-family dwelling and the remaining five lots would be duplex lots, two-family. They all meet frontage area and contiguous upland by the Chapter 97, 97-60 dimensional regulations of being zoned R-AG. So that's just the breakdown of the full map. I'll go to the 80 scale. It's the whole. So we've added, under the fire protection of zoning of Chapter 117-31, zoning requires underground, one 20,000 gallon underground storage tank. If you have, your subdivision is under wells or has load pressure, which the board has stated that high road has load pressure. So we are proposing, they, the minimum spacing in the roadway only would be 700 feet. Our roadway is 500 feet, 440, and so in the middle of the cul-de-sac is about 400 feet from high road. There is a hydrant located on high road in front of the property right here. Proposing two 24,000 gallon underground storage tanks with a recharge of shallow wells. So in other words, they wouldn't have to be recharged with town water, would have wells that would recharge them directly. So at no expense to the Newburyport water supply. And we're also proposing five more underground storage units along, inside the lots, which meet the five, seven hundred foot maximum spacing, which was above and beyond that regulation. So we're going above and beyond the fire protection bylaw. We presented this plan to the Fire Chief and Deputy Fire Chief, and he's written that letter. And he agreed that this is in good faith for protection of the homes. And we also, as one of the conditions that was written on the plan prior to meeting with him, that the back two homes, lots two and three, would be internally sprinkled for added protection. So these, this is, this by fact and by bylaw, this is, this is a very good fire protection and safety for the residents proposed lots. And just about the soil testing for all the lots. We're out there three times. One, we've done unofficial soil testing in the field area. We've done eight soil tests there to prove that we could do a sanitary disposal system for each lot. The second time we did, I did three test pits out there, which I showed you, the Planning Board at the site, Walker showed you the three test pits, which is very coarse sand, which will, is very good for sanitary disposal system design. And the third time would be the six official, I did six official test pits with the border health and three percolation tests in this area, just in case we ever decide to go the OSRD. That was for the sanitary, just common sanitary disposal system, if we went that route. And on the zoning on, I looked up zoning on driveways, which is Chapter 97-7, Section C. Driveways for single and duplex two-family dwellings, they have a bylaw of nine foot minimum. We're proposing the minimum twelve on each lot. And on the long driveways, we're combining those to be 24, which the Fire Chief had agreed that if we had a deep restriction, that would always be plowed. And it would be nothing, the lot line would be the only dividing between the two lot, between the two driveways, which would be 24. And the crossing would be 24, and then we'd go into a 20-foot wide driveway. He was comfortable with the 12-foot driveway there, 12-foot driveway there, which we only needed nine. And then the 24 here, where we go 12 here and then 16 here. So we've done the turnarounds. We have one, two, three, four, five turnarounds. Each turnaround has a 24,000 gallon underground storage tank, two in the cul-de-sac. We can also propose, if need be, a hydrant at the very end for even more pressure. So we're presenting tonight a plan that, that meets the subdivision control law from this Chapter 117. And we meet all the zoning requirements under Chapter 97. So this plan fully complies with the zoning and subdivision control laws. And we went further with the public safety issue, speaking with the fire department. So basically, we're here tonight to look for guidance. This is a very informal meeting, so before we file, we want to know which direction to go. Because the last time we were here, one of the members had said, if we went the OSRD, they never granted the variance for the contiguous upland for the open space. So we're here for guidance.
I don't have any questions.
Martha, do you have any questions, Scott?
Not about that, no. I know George had some, some questions, and since he's not here tonight, then...
I don't have any questions. So I don't know if we can guide you.
Well, we just, because I know the issues were about public safety.
As I said, we weren't going to be discussing, because we have just received the materials. So until it's digested, until it's reviewed, we can't comment on it. And I, I hope you can appreciate that.
And we're also short a member.
We are, yeah. And I think this was, I think this was communicated earlier in the afternoon.
I just wanted to present it, get it on record.
That was a significant, significant assistance.
And we're above and beyond, like when I said that regulation, they only mentioned that you only needed spacing of 700 feet in the roadway only, not into the lots. So we went above and beyond that.
I'll tell you, I was thinking of this project after hearing about the fire in Halifax over the weekend, the restaurant at the golf course. And so it was actually a sprinkled building, went completely down. It was, it was a restaurant with, it was just, you know, I just...
Well, commercially, you get...
In my head, yeah. Well, I understand. There's a difference.
Yeah, there's a big difference.
Sprinkled buildings, right. You know, commercial buildings are sprinkled a lot heavier too, right?
But when you get the internal, they, they have, I believe it's like a 10,000 gallon tank in the basement. And they only sprinkle to, if the fire alarm goes in this room, it only sprinkles this room. So they save on the water until the fire department gets there. Yeah.
So should we come in in two weeks again? Because we really don't want to start...
Yeah, we don't want to start another...
Again...
We don't want to stop two full-blown plans.
I, I understand. I can't tell you what to do. I can only tell you that we haven't had an opportunity to digest it.
So what I'm asking is, should we come back in two weeks?
That was probably, that was probably the recommendation that early this afternoon that was given. Yeah.
I didn't speak to Martha.
And Mark and I spoke.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll come back in two weeks, Martha.
Okay, I'll put you on the agenda for the 16th. We do have a public hearing scheduled that night at 7:15, but we'll try to do appearances before that.
Like quarter seven?
I think we can probably do seven o'clock.
Okay.
What's the public?
It's the Governor's Academy, the Student Center.
Yeah, that should be...
Yeah, that's that package there. So should I ask the question?
Okay, sure.
I got a phone call today from a resident of Riverview, and this was after we spoke, who said that I guess they saw a lot of truckloads of soil, filberting brought in on Friday and Saturday, so...
There were 20 trucks brought in there.
So what, can you tell us what that was for?
Extra material that I have.
So nothing, nothing for anything planned right now, just extra material?
Just storing materials?
Yeah.
So your storing materials?
That's all clean.
Okay.
It's out of the, it's out of the 100-foot buffer, no conservation issues.
Twelve feet off the lot line, it's as textbook as it gets, word put up. And it's just clay material for backing septics.
To be used on other projects or thinking of this one potentially?
For this one. Yeah, it's not a loading, it's not a lay-down spot for other projects. It's for this project eventually.
Any other questions, by anyone? Okay, great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Appreciate the information. Okay, our next appearance will be a submission of a special permit renewal application for Seacoast Canine, 35 Donfield Road. Owner applicant is Jennifer Ford, Seacoast Canine. So this will just be a submission of a, of the application, and so pretty straightforward. We won't be having any discussion, it'll just be a submission.
Do you want to say anything or what?
I don't think...
No, I think basically, as, as we've discussed, this is the special permit renewal application, because the original permit was good for 13 months. And it includes pretty much the same materials as the first one in terms of a narrative and the application form, what's, what's been, what's being done now and what the proposal is going forward. So I did review the draft. I, this came in this morning, so I will be honest, I haven't really looked at it. But if there are any questions, we can flush those out before the special permit hearing opens. So I think the two things that need to be done tonight, one is to accept the application, and the second is to set the public hearing date and time.
Great. So I'll entertain a motion to accept the application?
I'll move to accept the application.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and next I'll accept a motion to set a date and time. Karen, can Martha, a little guidance from your perspective?
So I know that in sort of communicating with Ben, the hope was to, since we've shifted our meetings to October 30th and November 13th, to get it on the agenda for the October 30th meeting. We do have the Golf Center hearing that night, which they're aware of. So it would, it would be after that, because that's set for 7:15.
Okay, so just so that you know, that, that might run a while. That tends to run oftentimes an hour, an hour and a half. Not that you'd like it to run that long, but sometimes they do. That's going to be a combined hearing, is that right?
That's correct.
So it will be a only hourly hearing. So should we set the time as 7:30 or something like that?
I would set it for, if that one's 7:15, I would set it for 7:45. And if it goes beyond that, we can just acknowledge that we have that, and it will start as soon as the other one's over.
So I would encourage a motion for a public hearing for this application for the 30th of October for 7:45?
Oh, for a public meeting at 10:30, 7:45?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. We'll see you then. Okay, thanks.
So I will, Jenny, I'll get you the, the language for the public hearing notice, either tomorrow or more likely first of next week. And it needs to go in. I'll give you the dates.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
All righty, going on to old business, proposed zoning amendments. Have you had a little discussion about this, Martha?
Yeah, so let's see, a couple things. There are a few things that we've talked about in the past that we need to move forward with. One was the request from the Selectman Jeff Walker in particular to review our wireless communications bylaw. And I have gotten from Tracy the go-ahead to contact the, schedule it here, to contact the consultant who had, that I was in touch with, to get a fee from them, so that we can kind of start that process.
So just, are you familiar with the discussion that we had?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, yes. Are you familiar with this? Okay, great. So it would basically be to have a consultant come in to help guide us through this.
The consultant that reached out or that's coming on board, are they New England-based or in New Hampshire?
They, no, they are New England-based. It's Massachusetts, and I'm sorry, it's just completely, I was on the road for over nine hours yesterday. I'm a little spaced today. So it's, they are local.
Are we required to get three quotes for this or...
Uh, no, no, unless it comes in. And what I'll do is I'll get an estimate from them. If it's over 30 or $35,000, then we'll have to. But I think, I think if it's under, we can, we can go single source, which would be helpful. These are the ones that were recommended hands down by a number of different people. So I think between this group, at least if we can go with them, and Lisa Mead, we should be well-covered.
Yeah. So what's the timeline then, Martha, on all this?
So... So I put together a rough draft schedule on the assumption that the Springtown meeting will be the fourth Tuesday in April, so that would be April 28th. We would actually need to get something together to propose to the Selectman by the beginning of February.
All right, so we got time then to work.
So we've got some time, but it goes pretty fast.
Understood.
You know, so that's essentially four months.
So if we did get a consultant in place, we're probably looking at six weeks, eight weeks before they're up and rolling?
Potentially. I mean, I think what they would need to do is review our existing bylaw, review the coverage in town.
So that takes us up to January.
So that could take us up to January and then depending. And this is a little, I built in a little fluff time here, but there's not a lot.
Okay.
All right, so we don't have to have our public hearing by February 2nd, just to vote to refer to the Selectman?
Correct, correct, yeah. So we're looking, according to the schedule, we're actually looking at the beginning of March. So the language doesn't need to be finalized by, by the beginning of February, but we need to have a pretty good idea of what is, that's being proposed. And that would be true for any of them.
Okay. So with that schedule in mind, that's, one, one issue was the wireless. Our second would be solar bylaw?
The solar bylaw, which we've attempted a few times, and it keeps kind of getting deferred.
So we should at least start the workgroup back with that.
Right.
So, and before we kind of discuss that further, then the third item would be, we're looking at other bylaws with regards to...
One would be looking at the potential for an inclusionary zoning bylaw. And Emily, I think I mentioned this last time, Emily is, is looking, she's done some research on bylaws in the area and is going to put together a table for us, showing what the provisions are of those bylaws, so that we, you know, sort of have a sense of what, how different communities are dealing with them.
So we basically have then three workgroups that we'd have to kind of oversee, I think? If we structured that correctly for the bylaws?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
If we want to do it that way, or else we do it. But it's, it's certainly easier if we can have some, you know, we're not stuck with our regular meeting schedule.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, you know. I mean, especially we've got some fairly time-consuming public hearings coming up too. Yeah, you know, one or two, whatever number of workshops, just to focus on zoning, I think makes a lot of sense.
Okay. Do we want to break it into workgroups, Martha? Tab? Or do we want to do workshops?
With such a small group, probably just a workshop and like stuff.
That's kind of what I'm thinking too, yeah.
Okay. Do we want to look at target dates now for those? Because it would be at least three.
Right.
And we are going to be entering November, which follows October, if I remember right from school, which has Thanksgiving in the middle of it. Then December, we have some stuff coming up. So we're going to be bumping into scheduling issues. So it probably makes sense to look at and schedule our things now, I think.
And I will be away for part of, the end, the end part of last week and a half of November.
Okay, so...
So that's Thanksgiving break, so that's out, that's last half of November.
So is that like the 20th on out?
I'm going from the 20th to the December 2nd.
Okay, so working back from that, that gives us two and a half weeks in November. And then one, two, three weeks in December.
I mean, I don't, I don't know what everyone else's schedule is like, but I'm available during the day. It doesn't have to be an evening meeting.
Good. Does that work?
I am, I am, all except for Tuesdays.
Okay, great. Do we want to look at a target date now?
Do you want to target anything in October?
Sure. October. Either the 22nd or the 21st, look on people's calendar, the 21st or the 28th. Those are both Mondays.
I can do either one anytime from 8:30 on.
Okay.
As well.
Okay, Martha?
And they're both open for me at the moment.
Oh my goodness. So we have two potential dates? Is that what I'm hearing? Wow, okay.
I think so.
So I, I'm freed up probably nine o'clock. So do we want to look at two nine o'clocks on the 21st and 28th?
Fine with me.
So you want to do both?
Yeah, let's schedule it, and we can always bump one out if we need to. And these would have to be posted, is that right?
I'm assuming so, since there'll be a quorum of the, of the board.
And we have plenty of time to do that?
Yes.
Okay. Workshops 21, 28, 9A. And what we'll do is we'll work on what our topics will be, and if we have any materials to disseminate before, then we'll try to get those out a week or so beforehand at least?
Yeah, we should to be productive.
Okay. Any other discussion on that?
I don't think so. That was 9:00 AM, right?
9:00 AM. Does that work for you?
It does.
And we want to be done by 11:45? That's plenty long. Yeah, okay. Perfect. All right, excellent.
That's AM right here.
That is the AM.
PM is way past my head.
All righty.
All right, and if there are other, other burning topics, then we can add those to the list.
So we have solar, communication...
And inclusionary.
Inclusionary, okay. There is a good number. Perfect. Okay, any other old business?
Not really. I've got some things under the Town Planner's Report. I can bring them up there.
Sliding some new business. So do you want to discuss our escrow funds?
Yeah. So for, as you guys know, for each of the applications that would, that we get, either subdivision or site plan review or special permit, we usually have an escrow account that's set up for pure engineering review. And so they get tracked both by, well, by, by me and by our treasurer and by our accountant. And we've been going through them, and they're all interest-bearing. And we've been going through them, trying, some, some were pretty old, so we've been trying to match funds to the accounts, because some of them weren't entirely clear. But going through them, there are some projects which have been either closed out or withdrawn that I think it's time to release those funds.
Okay.
So the two that I've targeted for right now, one is the Scotland Woods Livingston Lane subdivision, which was actually closed out a couple of years ago. The road's been accepted. The performance guarantee was returned. But we still have $84.62 in the, the engineering account. So in order to release those, the board needs to vote to release the funds in, in that account.
Okay.
So that's one. And the other one is the Green ER, the account that was set up for that, since they withdrew without prejudice. That's another one that I think we can, we can give back to the applicant, because they will get refunded with interest. And that's $155.29 as of August 31st. So there'll be a little bit of accrued interest, like a penny.
Great. I would entertain a motion to...
We should probably do them separately.
Separately, to have escrow funds released from the Scotland Woods Livingston Lane OSRD.
I will so move.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I'd now entertain a motion for the release of funds for the Green ER site plan review.
Move to release the funds for Green ER?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent.
Okay, good.
Town Planner's Report, we are just moving.
We are. Yeah, this could be almost a record.
I'm going to try for that.
All right, so a few things here. We have received a notice of intent to sell for 277 High Road. It's in Chapter 61A. Mark DePiero and John Morris have actually got it under agreement. And before the sale can actually take place, the town has to release the 61A. So this is going to be... So, um, this is gonna be on the selectman's agenda for next Tuesday night, um, to discuss, um, town councils, our normal practice is that the notice of intent to sell gets sent to Conservation Commission, it's already been distributed, I think, let me backtrack, it gets, the initial notice gets sent to the selectman, the planning board, the, uh, Conservation Commission, the assessor, and the state forester. Um, so the selectman will send it out and ask for comments from various town boards and committees, so I'll have that on the agenda for next time. Um, and they can either, if comments come back saying that there is some value for this parcel, um, to the town, they could vote to acquire it for the purchase price that's on the PNS. Um, they could transfer their right of first refusal to a nonprofit like Essex County Greenbelt or the Trustees of Reservations, or they can waive their right of first refusal and say it has no value to the town and, and let it go forward for development.
And can you describe the, uh, how large a parcel is it? What's the purchase price?
Um, the, I don't have it in front of me, the purchase price is two, I think it's two point something million. It's a six-plus acre parcel, it's the one right at the corner of Cottage Road and High Road. And the board endorsed an approval not required plan to divide it into six A and R lots last fall. And that's the one that actually had, since the existing buildings don't meet the current frontage requirements, that was the one that had the question about that.
Right, oh yeah, yeah.
And that's another thing that we actually need to add to our zoning, I knew there was something else, it was the, um, the footnote.
That's right.
Um. So, um, I actually spoke with Mark about this this afternoon as well, they're going to apparently submit another A and R plan to reconfigure the lots and get a seventh lot out of it. Um, and his proposal would be to restore the existing house and convert the barn into a dwelling. Assuming that, that all goes ahead.
But this is all just on a straight A and R, there's no OSRD or anything like that?
Correct, correct.
So anything new from us tonight?
So nothing, though it's really more a heads up.
Just anything special information?
Um, so, once the, um, once the selectmen have discussed it, I will send copies of the, the PNS, the notice of intent to sell to all of you. And as I said, get it on the agenda for the next meeting to discuss. Uh, the town has a hundred and twenty, well, has thirty days in which to determine whether the notice of intent to sell is complete. Town council has reviewed it, um, and a hundred and twenty days for the selectmen to exercise or waive their right of first refusal. So I did discuss that schedule with Mark today, he understands that it's, it could be four months, I doubt that it'll take that long, but it could be.
Is it considered a historic, historical site?
Um, in the house, the records show it being built in seventeen hundred, although I question that beco- just because of the, the configuration, the chimneys and everything, it looks more like it's late, later seventeen hundreds, but it has no historic designation on it. And the lower green doesn't have any historic designation on it at the, at this point either.
Oh, okay.
So, um, you know, it's not, it's not in a district. But that said, it does have historic value clearly.
Right.
So.
You're really like squeezing in a lot of houses on that, it's not a configuration of the land. It's going up and down the road, looking at the configuration of the land, it seems, really have to work really hard to get seven lots up there.
Yeah, I ca- I haven't looked at it since to see exactly how they're doing it, it was, you know, kind of cleanly broken into six lots, which, you know, ran back from Cottage Road essentially, and they all get their frontage on Cottage Road, except for the front lot. And the last one kind of curves around, it's at the curve on Cottage Road. So I'm not quite sure how it's gonna be done, but we'll see, see that when it comes to us.
Yeah, that, that Cottage Road, that's just across from the lower green, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's essentially the extension of Newman Road.
Okay, okay.
So if you cross High Road, you end up on Cottage Road, if you're coming from, um, Newman. So, um, let's see. We have a, um, a, a public notice, um, from Rumor Environmental Consulting regarding, um, the work that the trustees of reservations are doing, the old, Old Town Hill salt marsh restoration. If you recall, a few weeks ago, I mentioned that we had gotten something about that. And, um, this is an additional notice regarding that, um, I can read it to you if you want, it's pretty short, or I can email it to you.
Do you wanna summarize it?
Um, so basically what they're doing is they're taking, um, hay that's being cut and filling in certain dish- ditches to try to encourage them to get growth and, and be filled in, encourage natural revegetation of the ditches with native marsh vegetation. To help address marsh subsidence and improve coastal resiliency in face of sea level rise. Uh, requires no excavation or use of heavy equipment, um, the conservation, uh, commission has approved it and it has received a final record of decision under the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act from the O- Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. Um, so this is the, the chapter ninety-one license application. They are looking for comments by October eighteenth, um, which is the date of our next, it's two days after our next meeting. So.
Okay, are these the folks from UNH, or is that something different?
Um, that's something different.
Okay.
So I will, um, I'll send this out, but it seems like it's a good project.
Make sure it's forward.
Make sure it's forward. Um, and the other thing that we have, which will also be on the selectman's meeting agenda for next week, is, we've received a notice from Stan Tech, um, which is the engineer who is doing the Border to Boston Trail. And this notice, um, is basically, to say that they're advancing the design of the portion of the Border to Boston Trail going from, it's the Georgetown North section which goes through to Main Street, Asher Church Street, and Byfield. And so, uh, the section is shown on the attached, uh, aerial photograph. And, um, the purpose of this letter is to br- provide you with an opportunity to submit comments, questions, or concerns at this early phase of the design process. Um, and they're asking for comments back by October twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen. Um, quite honestly, I'm a little confused about this, only because that portion of the trail has been designed to twenty-five percent already, um, by Stan Tech and their predecessor, Facebooker Thorndike, which was acquired by Stan Tech. Um, the last I had heard was that they were doing an alternative route analysis, because there is an endangered species along there on the Parker River. And, um, there had been a lot of comment about trying to narrow down the width. Um, so I'm, I'm not quite sure, um, where that stands in relation to this letter. So, um, and this is not from our contact person at Stan Tech, so I'm going to follow up on this and hopefully have more to report at the selectman's meeting on Tuesday.
Great.
But I'm happy to go over, um, the drawings as we have them right now, with anybody who would like to look at them. And, um, I'll fill you in as I learn more.
Okay.
We're kind of the last segment, um, Newbury Port has done, you know, essentially their own with the Clipper City Rail Trail Phases One and Two. They're still looking at Phase Three, which would be connecting Parker Street and the train station. Um, Salisbury has been kind of tracking on their own as well, and then Boxford is part of this and Georgetown South, so we're sort of the last in the link.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we are on the Transportation Improvement Program for, I think it's fiscal, federal fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Um, I need to check with Tony Komornik at MVPC on that as well. But anyways, I'm, I'm just a little confused by this, because it seems to be sort of
Okay.
jumping in without relation to any of the discussions that have happened so far, or the work that's been done.
So our segment is the last segment?
Yes.
That should fit this puzzle?
Yes.
Now, is this puzzle piece has been presented to you, that's different from what?
No, it's the same route.
Okay, it's the same route, but the concern about the Parker River, uh, species?
Um.
Species, is that, is that the biggest?
That was certainly one, which could, you know, depending on what the alternatives analysis comes up with, that could um, change things.
Create a roadblock, right, okay.
So. And then the other question is, the very original proposal was to take this, continue it through Martin Burns, that's off the table now, so the question is how to find, um, a feasible off-road route to get from here up to at least Scotland Road. Because Mas DOT and others have deemed that, um, you know, Main Street and South Street are really pretty dangerous
Yes.
for bikers and pedestrians and...
Dangerous for our vehicles?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Let's hope that they can find a path, for the path.
So, we were going to talk to, um, Stan Tech actually, about the cost of a feasibility study to look at taking it up one side or the other Route ninety-five and within the right-of-way. So that's been discussed. But we would have to, the town would have to fund that ourselves. Mas DOT is funding the design work for the segment that's shown on this, and then the construction will be funded by the federal government, but anything beyond this is kind of on our, on our plate and our dime.
And that just happened because?
Um, it's a long story.
Right. But that wasn't the case with other communities, huh?
Um, well, other communities, and they've been dealing with some of it in different ways, but I think Georgetown and Salisbury, I believe, both have Community Preservation Act funds that they've been using for some feasibility.
Mm-hmm.
Originally, we were looking at this as a four-town project, so it was, um, Boxford, Georgetown, Newbury, and Salisbury, skipping Newbury Port, because they'd already done theirs. Um, and we were sort of going along with putting one, the funding was all in essentially one pot, which was being administered by MVPC. Mas DOT decided it would be better, since there were different segments being done at different times, to separate them into four different projects. Um, as part of that, they agreed to fully fund as a reimbursable thing, the design for the remainder of the work that needed to be done. Um, any changes from that we need to do, or any additions we need to fund ourselves.
So since we're falling into that category of redesigning, that's why?
Um, well, we don't know, we don't know at this point whether we're looking to redesign or not.
Okay. Okay.
But the cost went up exponentially, largely because, um, there are new bridge standards and we've got two crossings. There are two bridges that need to be replaced. So.
So funding this, from the town's perspective, would occur. Does, you can jump in at this point?
Um, well, funding for it, I mean, what will happen is, we, we do have, so for this portion of it, um, we have a memorandum of understanding with Georgetown.
Yes.
They're taking the lead, so what will happen is Stan Tech will send Georgetown the invoices, will be invoiced for our portion of it. Um, and then it's, we will get reimbursed by Mas DOT.
Okay.
Is it, there's no sort of town meeting appropriation required?
No. Since it's a reimburse, it's basically like a chapter ninety, um, reimbursement.
Thank you for explaining that.
I'm not sure I explained it very well, but...
You did.
But it's been a very, very, very long and complicated process, which has been going on for more than twelve years.
Really? Glad that we're maybe seeing some light again at the time.
And the right-of-way is owned by National Grid, um, there will be, um, a license agreement to acquire eventually. And also temporary rights of way during construction, um, a lot of wetlands along there, so it's, it's a very complicated.
Because of where it's grown, so, right. Alright, anything else on the town?
Um, I think that is it.
Okay. Uh, Portis Leckman. Pretty much wrapped up in all that too.
Uh, let's see, what did they talk about last time? I should've brought the agenda.
Um...
There was a lot of license renewals, there was a
License renewals, uh, National Grid Verizon.
National Grid, phone poll, public hearing for the eight towns court.
Revised Upper Green Advisory Committee and Town Hall Advisory Committee, they had to change the language.
Right, right.
And they are gonna revise how... I can't remember exactly how they decided to do it. It was, um, suggested by Eric Swan on the Building Committee to amend the metric for the Town Hall Advisory Committee.
Yeah, it wasn't actually, it was more to establish a metric for the, the advisory committee, you know, some, try to set up some objective ways to evaluate the different options that they, the committee might be coming up with, you know, whether it's to, um, renovate, uh, the existing building, renovate and add on to the existing building, tear down the existing building. And, you know, looking at how well each of the options suits the program needs that are identified or that have been identified, as well as how each one solves the, um, the site issues, it's, it, you know, as everybody knows, that corner's not a great corner, because you've got the entrances from High Road, as well as from Morgan Ave, and kind of right across from, um, from Parker Street. So, um, he had a series of suggestions of how to look at these things and kind of score them objectively.
Anything else, Martha?
Um, the only things, the other things I talked about were, um, the, uh, amount of money and the free cash and the
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no, actually, that was big, yeah, Tracy's report, that was big, we, we now, um, have been upgraded by Standard and Poor's to a triple A bond rating.
Yeah, that's wonderful. Which brought us in for the police department under three percent.
And it's wonderful, for the, for the industry, yep.
Yeah. Yep.
And our free cash has been certified at two point eight million.
Alright.
And the ambulance has, uh...
This is also wonderful.
It is, uh, it's terrific news.
I don't know, folks on the theoretical in today's paper, uh, Daily Times, which really, you know, commented on this, and it was really, it was a nice article.
Yeah, very nice article.
Yep.
Yeah, it's exciting.
And also the sale of the auction property.
Right, the sale of, right, which brought in about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I think.
Yeah, before.
And Bruce Tar was able to, um, get us forty thousand dollars put towards the bathhouse on the island.
So some positive news, great, great rating though, triple A rating.
Yeah, triple A rating, yeah.
That is huge. You figure, not too long ago, that wasn't the case, yeah. Situation, so I think town done a great job in pulling things together. Kudos, kudos.
Yeah, now Tracy's done an amazing job, you know, getting, getting our fiscal house in order.
There is. Alright, um, Conservation Committee, the next meeting will be the fifteenth of October, Zoning Board of Appeals.
Yeah, I don't have anything to report, same thing, the meeting, the night after our next meeting, I haven't seen an agenda yet, so.
Okay, and MVPC?
Um, well, they had a very nice sixtieth celebration last week. Um, Karen gave a great overview of the MVPC since nineteen fifty-nine to the present, and how it's changed, and their initiatives, and what they're gonna be doing going forward. Um, some nice commendations from, um, the Livia Governor Baker and Lieutenant Governor Polito, congratulating the, uh,
Organization, right?
the commission. Um, as well as a statement from the Senate, read by Diane DeZoglio and, um, Bruce Tar also and Bruce Starr also read the governor's statement. So, um, so it was a good, uh, good recognition of their sixty, sixty years of working on behalf of all the member communities.
Some of the good things have been accomplished.
Yeah, with their sixty years to come, plus...
Okay. Anything else for tonight's discussion?
I have none.
I don't have anything.
Well, that being the case, I would entertain a motion...
I would move to adjourn.
Second.
I, discussion on that. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you, everyone.